You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 24th meeting for the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
My name is Tracy Toman and I am the Michigan City Council President and this meeting workshop is now called order and this is put on by the Michigan City City Council. And today we have the Phoenix Investors that is here to speak to you about the data center. And before we get started, I have Skyler that has in their cards. If you have any questions or concerns or answered questions that you want answered, I ask you to fill these out and then we will collect those. We also, I also have a sign in sheet. If you would like to speak this evening, I need you to come here and sign this sheet. There's 10 slots and you'll have three minutes, just three minutes to address your comments or your questions to the Phoenix Investors. Also, we have the presentation and we have a few of these extra presentations you're going to welcome to these. And again, the investor wants to speak and we will hear them out. And then towards the end of our discussion, this is going to start a little bit after 5 o'clock. This is probably going to wrap up about 6 o'clock or later with 6:30. And those questions, the comments will be at the end for you to address those matters. And I'd like to turn this over to the Phoenix Investors.
Who's collecting the cards? Do you want me to collect them?
Uh, yes, you would. If not, I can have all the towels and whoever's got this. Three.
I'll collect.
Okay.
I like that question.
That might be just addresses for our time. So the list that is up here for you to sign in there are 10 slots. Those are the ones that will be allowed to make your comments or post their questions to the investors. The in back cards are for your comments or questions that will be picked up towards the end of our discussion. And those will then be turned into our clerk's office and to provide to the investors if those are things that need to be followed up. All of this information then will be, the presentation and your Q and A's will be put on the city website. Correct. Correct. If you would like to introduce yourself and your qualities as well and you'll go from there.
Thank you, Council and community for your time tonight. Really appreciate it. My name is John Correa. I work for the company of Phoenix Investors. I'm the head of their construction wing of the company. And I have Patrick Eatering here with me as well on the real estate side that's going to do a little bit of an introduction of the company.
Can you speak up to us a little louder, please?
Yeah.
All right. Again, thank you, Council, for putting us on the city. Again, Phoenix Investors, my name is Patrick Eatering, Director, Acquisition and Leasing for the company. Phoenix Investors is based out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Our core business is acquiring former single tenant manufacturing cities across the country. Today, we own property in 27, maybe even be 28 states of last week, a little over 83 million square feet in the portfolio today. And you know, this strategy of acquiring former single tenants, repositioning them, spending the capital has led to a number of case studies of positively transforming the communities that we touch on a continued basis. Here's a sample of our portfolio in the states that we own in. Again, the concentration generally in that Midwest region where historically, single tenant manufacturing buildings were built and expanded over time. Give a little sample of some projects. This was an acquisition in Normal, Illinois. A building that had been tied up in the courts, bankruptcy, it was 60% finished at the time of acquisition and it sat in that 60% state for close to a decade. We acquired it successfully in 2021. And without a tenant or occupant, immediately began the renovations to put the building back into a tenable condition. Couple examples of what the building looked like at the time of our acquisition. Roof was only completed in roughly half. There was no membrane. It was just a deck. Dock sat open. The building sat open to the element. We, again, immediately began the formal renovation and bringing the building shell closed and ready for occupancy. Couple examples of the finished product there. Again, a great example of a Class A industrial building. Along the course of construction, we had been approached by Rivian Auto, EV Auto Group. And in a compressed timeline, was able to complete additional improvements on the inside of the building and which ended up or resulted in us putting an additional 500,000 square feet on the site that was pad ready at the time. So it was an excellent outcome. Rivian maintains occupancy and building and is a core part of their manufacturing process in that region. The building we're talking today here on Royal Road, many would know as the former ANCO or Federal Mobile originally built in 1960. We acquired this property in 2022 and much like other projects, started to peel the layers back, understand what it is and how we can best renovate for a future tenant to be later determined. In the industrial world today, the clear height is a major impact for tenants users. And not uncommon, buildings built in the 1960s, 70s, or even earlier had clear heights of 16, 18 foot clear. We identified this building and the market and the condition as a prime opportunity to take the roof and raise it. So if anyone has had the opportunity to drive by or see what's going on, that is currently taking place. And that is an amenity that most users would want to see. So we proactively took that approach to take the roof up to 28 foot clear.
Yep, 28 foot clear.
So as part of... So as part of that renovation was removing ancillary equipment, roof structures that were no longer used in the manufacturing process, kind of turning it back to a shell condition. In addition, paint, updated lights, updated dock equipment. And all those renovations have been ongoing for the last 12 to 14 months under John's leadership. And I will let John take the project from here.
Yeah, and as Patrick stated, Phoenix takes a risk on these projects. There's investors out there that don't want to put the upfront capital into a building until they have a tenant. So Phoenix, many years ago, found that putting some upfront money into a building, getting it to a marketable position helps these end users or these potential end users or gives them the ability to kind of see themselves in the space. So over the last 10 to 15 years of doing this industrial, that's been a platform that we've been continuing on. So at Phoenix Risk for this specific project, we started what we call kind of our white box concept, which Patrick was explaining there. Again, with no tenant in mind, there were some bites there, but it was prior to this project coming to fruition here. So I just wanted to say too that this facility is in M1 zoning industrials, which has data center as allowable use there. So just wanted to kind of show you proposed site plan of what we are proposing for the site. And if you can kind of see, I know the color doesn't really stand out as well here, but this is the original, the L shape here is the original Federal Mobile building, which then has electrical yards on each side, our proposed electrical yards, a proposed mechanical yard to the north, and then a proposed new substation to the north, which is going to be fed from across the street from Royal Road, which has an existing NIPSCO substation. Basically crosses over Royal Road, goes up in halves into ours. And then what you see down here, based on the infrastructure capabilities and the timelines it will take from NIPSCO, the water department and sanitary, there is a proposed future ground up data center that is going to be proposed here. That's not what we're here for today. This is just specifically for the existing building. So a big question that kind of gets asked is what is a data center? Right? We, on our day to day, rely on data centers pretty much in anything we do, whether it's streaming your favorite TV shows, attending some classes online, connecting with your family on FaceTime, looking at a map, et cetera. Basically, all these data centers are connected and basically service us globally to keep us connected. And why build a data center in this facility? So the first aspect of this is a sustainable approach. So you see a lot of ground up data centers going up around the country. This is a, this is a, this gives us the ability to use a former facility and an adaptive reuse for this use. The other aspect of this is the power, right? NIPSCO being across the street, having the scalable utility infrastructure for us was another key point to this. And then also the available water and sanitary discharge for the site, which they have availability for. And then I would say the most important topic or the most important point for development here is how pro-development Michigan City is. So I wanted to get into a couple frequently asked questions when you're doing the data centers. And the first one I wanted to bring up was the noise. And noise from these sites comes from basically three major things. The cooling, which includes the chill water systems, the electrical switching and substation, which we'll be installing on the site, and then the emergency generators. And I want to emphasize emergency in those, for these generators, because these are only going to be ran if there's a failure or an outage to the site. So they will not be running consistently. They will not be generating any extended power for the site. These are only specifically used in emergency situations. The only other times they'll be ran is if they're being tested or having maintenance done on them, which is about 45 to 60 minute period once per month. And I've hired electrical engineers, or noise engineers, sorry about that, to do an analysis on the site with the equipment that we're providing. And we will be achieving that 60, 65 decibel mark at the parcel line. And as I mentioned, the generators are only ran periodically for testing. And this end user that we have in mind here, across anything that they implement or deploy, they use the highest standards and highest technology equipment that they can for efficiency and sound mitigation. The next aspect is the site lighting and project buffering. We've also hired engineers to do an overall photometric study of the entire site. And this project will meet all local requirements for the allowable foot candles and the various divisions of their code. And any type of shielding that we're going to require for this lighting will be installed as required. As far as buffering, there is an existing tree buffer around the site and we plan to maintain that. Or if we do need, I guess pending design, if there's any other design input implications, sorry, then we may have to adjust that slightly or if there's any safety concerns with our electrical lines that we're running. And then along the east side of the property, along Royal Road, we will have some buffers there. There's going to be some three to five foot buffers and we will be installing about 150 to 175 mixed trees, which will range typically around the two inch caliper, roughly between six and 12 feet. And in these landscape buffers, we'll also be installing about 140 to 160 shrubs. And I just want to make sure everybody knows that the intent behind both noise and sound, or both noise and lighting here, is that the end user is very specific on that and they will self-enforce all the limitations throughout their time on the site. And as stated here, it was kind of not showing the last one, but we're showing along Royal Road here, all the yellow hash areas here, those are all the proposed landscape buffers. Obviously, we're still going through kind of the final plan step that is not complete yet, but that's a general idea. And I put some cross sections there too, as far as some of what firms would look like. Some of the environmental considerations, I know electromagnetic has come up quite a bit in the past and I want to emphasize that these data centers run off Ethernet and fibers, not radiation, and heat is commonly the byproduct and also the equipment that they use there. And either way, the site will comply with the state and local and federal requirements and it won't pose any health risks to the local community. And I just want to say that the equipment that we will be installing there is consistent with what NIPSCO uses throughout their territory and also is exactly what is installed directly across the street. So just wanted to reiterate that as well. As far as wetlands go, this end user, when designing data centers on sites, they design in an optimized way to avoid and minimize any impacts both to any land features and natural resources. And then again, on the emergency generator side of things, I know I'm kind of repeating myself here, but these are only used in emergency situations and any air permitting that we will need to obtain via EPA or I D M, we will be acquiring those throughout the process. Fire and life safety, the end user will have 24/7 security on site. And we will also be installing a new fire suppression system and fire alarm system that will meet all applicable codes locally and statewide. We have been and will be working with the fire marshal to make sure all of his ordinances or requests are taken care of. And any systems on the site that we will be installing will not have any chemicals as far as an additive to them. Utilities, so there was one back. Yeah, there you go. As far, I'm going to go through water, sanitary and electrical. So as far as water goes, there's two main points besides fire suppression of water usage on the site. The first is your typical domestic, whether it be toilets and sinks. And the second is the chillers, the chilled water system. And I think there's a little bit of misconception there because after we fill the chilled water system once, the only time that we will be pulling water from the water supply is just to make up any water that has been evaporated throughout the system. So it's not like we're filling, flushing, filling, flushing every time. It's a closed loop system, so every time, anytime that we need to pull and make up water, that's the only time that we'll be doing that. And we've been discussing with the Michigan City Water Works and have been informed that there's ample water, both for the city and for the site. And providing water to our site will not increase any of the local community's rates. And if there's any additional questions at the end, I know there's a rep in the water department here too that can answer those. On the sanitary side, it's about the same. The site, as far as sanitary, will only be using for domestic toilets, sinks. And if there may be an emergency occasion, very rare chance of it happening, but if there are, anything ever happened in the chilled water system and we need to flush the system, we would do that in a controlled manner with a hose. But we talked to Michigan Sanitary District and Michigan City Sanitary District and the existing sanitary system on site from the form of Federal Mobile use is sufficient for our use now. So we are all set on that side. And again, there will be no outages of services, both on the sanitary or water side, to supply those utilities to our site. On the power side of things, the end user has been working very closely with NIPSCO on an energy study, making, defining exactly how much power they need and how much power NIPSCO can provide them. There are infrastructure improvements that will be made to the adjacent NIPSCO substation to support the end user, but these infrastructure improvements will increase the capacity and improve the overall reliability of that substation, which will help the local community around that area. The cost of these NIPSCO upgrades are not going to increase the rates, nor will they cost to supply any of the power, nor will the cost of any of the supplying of the power to our site be borne by any of the rate payers. And I want to emphasize this again to you that I know other data centers have ran off temporary turbines in the past as far as bridging the gap to their operations. There will be no temporary facilities on this site. It will be strictly grid power from day one. And again, just like the water and sanitary, there will be no outages for these improvements made to the substation or running us power. Traffic for the site, just like any other typical construction project, big or small, you have an influx of traffic, right, coming to the site. We consider this only temporary, it's only going to last the project. We are working actively now on onsite storage and logistics and also looking around for local lots and land around the site to kind of alleviate some of that congestion. But once this facility, the buildup of this facility is complete, we're going to be seeing about 80% less than a typical industrial or light manufacturing tenant or user, which was the original use for this building, you know, 15 years ago. Residential property values, there are defensive reports that data centers development generally leads to positive impact on property value. It's shown that when data centers are built, especially for land value, land value typically tends to go up because of the high demand for a utility infrastructure area around these kind of data centers. And similarly, data centers, when they are built, it has been shown to boost the values of the surrounding residential homes as the demand for housing increases as more jobs start becoming online. And residential property taxes with a project this size may be lowered due to the size. And I can let some of the city's real estate side talk about that, Dan, after. The economic benefits to the city. So this project will result in $26.1 million to the city in the way of the following. A million dollars to Economic Development Corporation, Michigan City, Indiana, to use to support economic development in the city. $100,000 to the Michigan City Sanitary District to improve some downstream infrastructure commerce site. 5.5 million as an EDI payment upfront and then 500,000 per year for the next 39 years. And to put it into perspective on the real property tax side of things, currently as the building sits, we pay about $22,000 per month, per year, or per year, sorry, on the taxes, thank you. And after this project is completed, it will be an estimated total real property of about $926,000 per year, roughly 42 times more than what we're, what's being paid at this moment. And that's from years one to 10, and then it doubles year 10 to 1.5 million dollars, which is about 68 times more than what is being paid right now thereafter. So and the city's allocation to that is about 48% overall. And to kind of highlight some of the end users' aspects throughout their infrastructure and products and services that they provide, they do help grow businesses and careers in communities in the locals, in the local communities that they serve. And they do get in touch with the community and provide long-term support through grants, educational programs and other incentives. And then the kind of an extended continued economic benefit is during the construction project, there will be about 5 to 800 construction jobs created there. After construction, when the data center comes online, there will be about 30 plus high skilled jobs as well as some facilities and maintenance support. And then, yeah, and I think I will wrap it on that.
Thank you for that presentation. So now we're going to open it up for the public comments and those that are listed on here, I will call you as you're listed on here, starting with Andy.
Oh, you could have stayed there, but that's fine.
Good evening, council members and community members. So I am Skyler, the market selector. Our business has been in Michigan City locally since its onset of 1930. Not only have we been in Michigan City since 1930, we've been union since 1930. So over the past, myself, I'm a union IBW Local 531, my mother as is my father. So between my immediate family, we have over 100 years working in IBW Local 531 in McCord County and Michigan City community. Over the past several years, we've tried to expand our company and a lot more opportunities for Michigan City residents and families alike. We did that by starting a construction company and we got Signatory Local 1485. And we also started a union sheet metal company that's Signatory Local 20. So all our companies are based out of Michigan City and they are all union. I just wanted to come here and speak and let you know the outreach that you could potentially do with your approval. Mr. Correa of Phoenix reached out to me. I've never in my life, and I've worked at the shop since I was in my twenties, had someone of his level stop by the shop and not only talk about building a local business and wanting to include union labor, but to include local union labor. So I found our conversation very genuine, very sincere. He took me to the job site, he toured the job site, he met his key staff, I guess I'll call it, and he made it clear to them that if the job should get moved forward with the city's approval, that he didn't want local, not only union labor included, but local union labor from Michigan City. So him and I have reached an agreement for the inclusion of all three of our firms, which would represent 1485, 531 and Local 20. And besides the money that's discussed here, the city would receive, there is also a great opportunity for growth of local business and the families that work directly for our business. So we appreciate all jobs we get, big, small, we value them all, but you have to have some job of substantial size eventually to grow your talent, grow your finances, buy equipment and be able to obtain true growth. I've never in my life had this opportunity to possibly achieve this growth in Michigan City and it's never definitely come in our door that we didn't have to pursue it. So I've just come here to speak on behalf of, we had a host of those discussions, have to thank you to the man at the door, that he will carry that through with me. And it would be a great opportunity for everyone that works for our firms now and if you'd share all of those considerations.
Next we'll have Sky. Next, we'll have Scott.
I'm not going to go all the way up there. I'll just come here. My name is Scott, I'm a resident, Michigan City resident. I know this is really a back and forth, but I think many of us would like the answers to these simple questions. I'm going to be pretty easy with this. Do you need zoning or any other city approval other than building inspections and so forth, building code things, or can this done be as a matter of right?
Yeah, it's currently zoned M1, and data centers are allowable in M1 zone.
Great. My understanding is also that you're taking over a 400,000 square foot brownfield site, a vacant industrial building that's been vacant for 15 to 20 years or so, certainly since its peak years. Is that correct?
Correct.
This is being restored with private funds? Have you asked for any city subsidies?
Private funds, no city subsidies.
That's great. Those are both great. My, also, I understand that it was a 1.25 million purchase of the property. If it's something you can share, what is your total capital budget, and what do you expect the equipment buildup to be? And the one last question I think will affect most people here is, what is the nearest housing to the cooling plant?
Yeah.
Because that is the main noise of these type of things.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to the total cost of the project very clearly. I do respect that side of things, but I'd have to, I'd have to look. From the cooling, I don't have a map in front of me that I can measure it, but the closest residential house is north east of us, across from the CO lighting plant, but I can't, I don't know exactly how many feet, but I can give that answer.
I looked at that last, it's about 1,300 feet, about quarter mile.
1,300 feet, quarter mile. Thank you. That's interesting.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly.
I'm just going to sit back here. My name is Kelly Lisinski, I'm a resident in Michigan City. I probably live a half mile from where all this is going down, and as a resident, I can tell you, we don't want it. I'm going to be all over the place, but you can say in your little slideshow that we're not going to lose water, we're not going to lose power, we're not going to have any of the financial burden. Look around at the centers around here, it's simply not true. I've already talked to people down by New Carlyle where they're building it, they're already having water shortages, they're already complaining, they're already having issues themselves. So many cities in Porter County have done everything they can to prevent this from happening, and they were successful because they were given notice. We were not. I live down the road. The health risks to us. Look up Memphis, look up North Virginia, they're getting COPD, they're getting cancer, they're getting respiratory illnesses. It is going to kill them. It has killed some. So you can sit here, and just because you write it, doesn't make it true. Your noise pollution, a constant conversation and dishwasher, I don't want to be sitting in my yard and constantly hearing that. We'd like peace and quiet at some point in time of our lives. And I could just go on and on. The schools, we had two schools right there, a preschool. We're going to put preschool kids in danger with this? Outdoor recess, Krieger's downright kitty corner to, probably butts up to your property line. Yeah. So this can all be well and good, and you put your construction jobs, great. Once you're done, it's 30 people. How is that helping the city? It's not.
Nope.
Um, I don't even know, I have so much, I could go on and on forever, which I've written to my councilman, woman, she hasn't responded, because my understanding is NDAs were signed, and that's why none of us were given any heads up to try and stop this like all the other local cities. And I also question, I know some board was made in the county to make sure these stay away from residential neighborhoods. This is in my neighborhood. I can literally take a two-minute walk and I'm there. I'm not safe. My family's not safe. Anyone around me is not safe, and if you have a child that goes to Krieger or the preschool at Neiman, your children are not safe. And they can say all they want, and it's already happening. I don't know what you can do to stop it. I'm ashamed that there's nothing you can do to stop it, quite frankly. But whatever they're asking from you, I ask you to prevent it. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we'll have John.
I'm right here. Hi, I'm John Carrington, I live in Michigan City. I just wanted to say that I lived in Illinois back in the seventies when they were putting in nuclear power plants and telling people they were quiet, they didn't make any noise. And I remember moving here in the eighties, and they were tearing down this neighborhood called Canada on the north side of Trail Creek for urban renewal. And that was what they were calling it, and they wanted to make sure that Trail Creek was navigable, legally navigable, not whether it was actually navigable, and everybody thought, oh, they're going to put it in a marina, but it was actually the casino. But nobody knew it was the casino until it was a done deal. And so I want to just make sure that when we're talking about these things and discussing them, that we really know what we're talking about. I see under residential property values here, I see generally can, maybe, we're wondering about the Economic Development Corporation. We know they're going to receive a million dollars according to this, so I don't expect them to be terribly objective about this. And I, I'm all for building industry in this town, I'm just wondering if, I looked up M1 on Michigan City's code while y'all were talking, I don't see anything about data centers in there. So I see light industrial, but it might be heavy industrial, so I want to know where the data center is allowed. I hope the water won't be impacted. You say that the cooling systems don't require any extra water. And I think that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I hope everybody gets, you know, I appreciate the thing from the tradespeople and all that, and it's terrible to see that Anco plant sitting empty, but I just want to make sure we know exactly what we're getting into if we go forward with this. And I, I don't want people who are standing to receive a million dollars to be speaking for this, because I think there might be a little bias involved.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have Heather.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Heather Ennis, President and CEO of the Northwest Indiana Forum. We are the seven county economic development organization. So first, I'd like to thank you all for the investment that you've made in Michigan City and the improvements that you've done to this property. It has sat vacant and been a blighted property in the city, so we're very grateful for the investment that you've made to attract investment to this. I know that data centers are a complicated issue, and there's many sides to these, but truly they are great investments and great opportunities for communities. We are seeing a gold rush of these happening right now, and it's important as communities that we be open to the conversation. So particularly appreciate your presentation and showcasing both from a noise level what that means. I think that other uses could be permitted at the same site that would be significantly louder. So appreciate the consideration that's gone into the high-tech equipment and what that can mean from a noise mitigation perspective. Also appreciate the partnership that this will bring to the community, the opportunities. We stand not to benefit from this in any way financially, but, but we do really appreciate when good community stewards come in and want to partner with communities and create job pathways and career pathways for our students in years to come, and really look to engage with the community and be partners in that. So we appreciate this type of investment. We're constantly looking for opportunities to put these types of investment. And I think in an industrial area where it's already a permitted use, where you're taking a blighted facility is a win-win-win in our book. And so thank you again for making that possible, and thank you for looking to invest in Michigan City.
Thank you, Heather. Next, we have Don.
This time? Thank you. Don Bamcock, 2424 Hideaway Point, Long Beach, but a long-term resident of Michigan City. I have a long-term history in economic development. I spent about the last 20 years trying to actually encourage this type of development. I've actually visited at least two significant data centers. They are, the representation I heard here is very accurate relative to what I've seen. It's a, it's one of the clean, advanced manufacturing industries that, that we have been chasing for years to actually come to our community and invest typically millions and millions of dollars, sometimes billions of dollars into the community. We're going to have a gap in our tax base, assuming the Michigan City generating station does end up going away in a few years. And I know this could be a significant offset to that relative to the new taxes generated. Plus, your willingness to work with the city in terms of trying to make sure that is a good fit for this area. We've been trying to market this property for at least the last 20, 25 years or so. I've had many people come through it. Other types of industry that are not as clean as this have been interested in coming there. And in fact, we've been lucky, in my mind, even though this is the first I've seen the presentation tonight, to have them come forward on a, on a, I suppose, a little bit on a spec basis to acquire the property and invest significantly in our community to make it a better place and create better jobs for all of us. So I'm more than willing to put my name on something, and if people want to call me, they can call me too. Thank you.
Next, we have Jim.
Good evening, my name is Jim Clarida. John, I think we can find some phone tag. I'm the Business Manager for IBW Local 531, as well as the LaPorte Building Trades President. I have a pretty simple question, part of it was answered just with Mr. Sias' commentary earlier, but it's pretty simple. If approved by the council and construction does start, is your intent to use nothing but local union labor on this project for the construction?
So the plans are still about 80%, so I have that in LaPorte, it's out yet, but the plan, our approach is, is going to be competitively to the union. So, but the end user and Phoenix are from our side of things. When we go into these markets, what we try to do is bring as much local to the project as possible to build these companies, though. Right? So we're going to do, we're going to take every effort to include as many companies as we can around here, but it's a big project, you know, there's a lot of work to handle. So we'd love to have other conversations.
Yeah, we can definitely follow up, but would you guys entertain entering into a project labor agreement with local buildings? You wouldn't?
That's from the end user.
I understand, that's why I wanted to ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Jerome.
I'm right here. I don't need a microphone, no, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say I know data centers are the way now.
I think they're recorded.
So I'm not naive to think that data centers aren't here to stay. My issue, I think all of our issues is here is where you're trying to put it, and why was it done in such a backhanded way? And you said something about it's not going to raise our, well, first, I guess I got to say this first, the fact that we're all even here having this meeting right now proves that everything that's been said by this administration since the last town hall meeting has been an absolute lie. Because the mayor said that she had a meeting with you, and she said, no, we don't want it. It's not going to bring benefit to the city. Then in the same breath says, I don't know what they're building, I don't know what they're building, but it's a private developer and they have the permits, but no permits have been shown. So in that very comment, she contradicts herself. And the fact we're all here right now having this, this meeting that was supposedly had under the NDNA, why are we here unless it's a done deal? It's backhanded, I don't know what's going on, but nobody here is trusted after all the lies. This is obviously a done deal, is it not? You keep talking, oh, this is, we're building, what will be built? This is a done deal, and it's been nothing but lies. So I don't really see what it's going to benefit the community. People are going to get tax cuts. Andy, good to see you here, mister getting all these, getting all these jobs with no bids. It's nice that, it's nice that you got this, this job already. It's, it's.
I got it from NIPSCO.
Yeah. You do not put a data center where you're trying to put it. Put it somewhere else.
I ordered raising our kids.
It's common sense. Common sense. Nobody's, this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sure, my team is.
Next, we have Don.
Great. Mr.?
Oh.
This is Don.
You're right.
Yes.
It's me?
Yes.
Hey, Laura.
I saw on the internet a report from our neighbors in Chicago. Turns out that data centers are driving spikes in electricity costs in our neighbors in Chicago, okay? These, these data centers draw a lot of power. And that has to be made up somehow. Yes, they're going to, they're going to upgrade the substation, but the electricity coming into the city comes from suppliers all over, and we have to bid harder, and NIPSCO will have to bid harder to get all the power we need. Yeah. All you have to do is, is look at what has happened in Chicago. I'm going to send this, send a link to our council members. Yikes, I don't know what's going to happen here.
Excuse me. I would ask that there are no title outbursts unless your call is contacted. Next, we'll have that, please.
Thanks. So I do have some questions there we can answer. I would like to know, to Don's point as well, what is the exact kilowatt-hours demand for Phase 1?
I can't release that information for the end user.
So that seems like that would be a pretty simple calculation.
Yeah, it's confidential information from the end user.
You know, really goes to the, you know, electric demand, and of course, as Don says, the spiking and the requirement for competitive acquisition of electricity. So where can we find that number, or when can we find that number?
That's a question you'll have to ask NIPSCO or the end user, yeah.
NIPSCO would know that?
I can't personally.
Would NIPSCO give us that number?
I don't know if they can release it.
It's not, it's not something we share.
So no.
We wouldn't share customer information.
Yeah.
So we don't, so, okay, so when will we know? We will know when what happens? What will happen that will mean?
I can't give you that answer, yeah.
At some point, someone will know, right?
Again, yeah, when they get their bill, the customer's paying their own bill.
This is a crucial data fact.
Well, I can't, I can't answer that question, so.
So you should be able to say when, what needs to happen for that number to be calculated?
That is a question for the end user. We don't pay their bills. They, they will take over the property when we.
You are designing this, and you are, you know, you have the specs for this building to be a data center?
Correct.
So in those specs should be a calculation of kilowatt-hours demand.
I can't release that information.
Because it's confidential?
Yes.
Okay, so you know what you're not saying. Is that right?
I can't release that information.
Okay, all right. What will power the backup generators? Is it diesel?
Diesel, yes.
Diesel? So, and what will you be doing to capture and sequester CO2 emissions?
So we will be, obviously, we, we follow all regulations, so for, we're going to be getting all air permits required for the site. So these are, these are highly sophisticated Cummins generators that basically give off the lowest NOx level possible, so.
So it will be just the standards that IDM imposes? Nothing more than IDM imposes?
Everything's regulated through IDM and EPA. Those are, those are.
And that will be, that will be the standard that you meet, just what IDM requires?
IDM and EPA.
Okay, because that's not very good.
Yeah.
That's not a good community partner. Okay, and you mentioned in the packet, it says EDI payment, can you tell me what that is?
You would have to ask the Economic Development Board, it was an acronym that they use, so.
I'm sorry?
You'll have to ask the.
Clarence?
Council, yeah.
Clarence, no, Clarence says no?
Yeah.
Oh, who is it?
Impact fee.
Economic?
Well.
Economic Development Impact Fee. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Economic Development Impact Fee. Can you tell me what that is?
It's a fee for the benefit of the company to get...
Impact. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, and then you mentioned something about when you were talking about the... When you were talking about the noise? And you said something about end user self-enforcement?
Yes.
Can you explain that?
They hold themselves at a high standard. If there's any, ever any, an issue where...
Do you know who the end user is?
Once he answers this question, you're free to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, she already asked the second question, so yeah.
So can you explain that?
Well, I don't, I didn't...
So the question was, can you explain what you mean by end user self-enforcement of noise levels?
Correct, yes. It's, the company holds itself at a high standard and if there was ever any issue with any noise beyond the, the code requirements, then they would self-enforce that and correct that issue.
We're not the one who puts that here at eight o'clock at night over there.
Okay, I guess so that's it for me. Right, okay.
I would also now like to ask from the council if there are any comments or questions that the council would like to ask at this time.
How many generators will be on site?
That's still getting calculated through design, so we're almost there on that.
Okay, I noticed in one section you talked about potential growth. So with potential growth, would it be more generators, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay. Far as timeframe, when will the generators be ran? Night, morning?
So per your local regulations, they...
Excuse me, could I ask if you could please hold your comments or private conversation because they can't hear? If you would, could you please raise your level of this a little bit, please?
The question was when the generators will be ran?
Yes, sir.
Per your, your sound ordinance, your sound code here, they can only be tested and have maintenance done on them between eight and five P M. Otherwise, the only other instance is that they would be ran is in an emergency situation.
Okay. As far as design goes, you spoke on diesel. Would natural gas be an option?
Not to the end user. So that may be on the second deployment if there was one, but this, they, you know, they have time slots for equipment delivery, so...
Okay. I think that's all I know.
Any other councilman? Councilman Holter?
So we were talking a little bit about the water usage and how in New Carlyle, they're already experiencing water problems. So I just kind of wanted to send that question over to Chris to talk about how that's going to be experienced in Michigan City.
Pretty simple solution on that. At this point in time, the Department of Water Works in Michigan City, as a treatment facility, is capable of putting out 20 million gallons a day. The highest day we have had in the last two years is 9.1 million. The average is 6.6 million. This facility, based on the information that I have available to me, which, don't ask, I can't tell you, but based on the information I have available to me, is not going to put us in any kind of position. On top of that, our facility is actually built and capable of being enhanced even further without significant infrastructure improvements to our facility. We, we might have to make a few adjustments here and there, but we have plenty of water to, to provide to this project, both in its initial phases and in its future phases as well. I will want to make one comment to that also. We do have a prison that's getting ready to close. There's a possibility that the NIPSCO Generation Station closes. Both of those facilities buy water from our utility. If we're not selling water to those facilities, that increases what we have to charge in that sense, because the fewer places we sell water to, the more it falls onto the existing customers. So we, we need facilities that are able to use the water, are respectful with the use of water. Like you said, it's not going to be use and dump. It's going to be circulated, limited, limited dumping to outside. So this is one of the best uses of water for a water utility, because there's going to be occasions where they need a little bit more, but during the winter time, they're not going to use much at all, because they don't have to run the cooling as heavy. So this is a, a great opportunity for the Department of Water Works to help offset the future, the future costs that we're going to have when we lose the prison. That's one of our big customers. And if the NIPSCO Generation Station does move on, we, we have to make that up too.
Thank you.
No, because I believe, so he asked me. He asked me, so answer.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Go ahead.
This is my problem. They can say all this. I'm going by the people who are living it, the people in Memphis, the people in Virginia, the people down the road, and I could go on and on, actually research it. They are begging for help. Those people are begging for help. It's, no one's talking about their health. Number one should be health, then water. Sorry, I don't want to get cancer or respiratory disease. And I have a friend who works at the EPA and she told us to move. So there you go. She works for the government. She said, "Move, get out."
Okay, so is that part of town, just generally, is that on city water, all of it? So it's all going from the cleaning station there? It's that, it's that coming, it's that getting discharged into a septic and then going through the ground and coming up through somebody's?
No.
Water?
No, no, okay. So i- if you're, if you're concerned, like in other communities that are in the process of having these systems developed, they are starting off in a position where they have to drastically increase their capacity to meet the demands that have been requested of them. In the situation in New Carlyle, they are, they have been building additional capacity to meet the requests and the requirements that are for a substantially larger project than this even is. That is a huge project. I think it's a, a total of maybe 20-some buildings over, 30 buildings over hundreds of acres. I mean, it's a huge project compared to what we're looking at in this situation. We already have the capacity. Our treatment facilities, our, our system was built for a industrial environment back when Michigan City was loaded with heavy water use industrial. Water was cheap, nobody paid attention. It just ran and they didn't worry about the water bill. Nowadays, everybody uses less and less water. Our per capita usage goes down every single year. And because of that, we have to be careful with how we spend our money and look for opportunities like this. So if this is a great, this is a good opportunity, this will benefit and this will not hurt anybody as far as volume of water. There will be no issues with what capacity folks have in their homes. They have nothing to do with this project.
Thank you. Really quick before I ask another question, I just want to give Ms. Tracy her flowers because last night, the county had their meeting about data centers and we were talking to them afterwards and they were surprised that we were allowing public comment. So yeah, I just want to thank her for, for this opportunity and for giving the public a chance to speak on this when other parts of our government refused to do so. So the next question I've got is about electricity costs. Ms. Eaton, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so we have in front of the Indiana Utility, oh, sorry. So I'm Katie Eaton, Public Affairs and Economic Development with NIPSCO. We do have in front of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission right now, a proposal for a portion of our company called GenCo, which will really do three things for our customers as we look at these large load potential developments coming into our service territory. One is that it would protect our existing customers. First and foremost, we want to make sure that our current customer base does not bear the brunt of the costs that are associated with these large developments. Second, it really is a way for us to be a little bit more flexible in speed to business for these developments as they come into our communities. And third would be just to really protect ourselves. We want to make sure that we're working with large load developments that are financially capable of implementing the, the development that they want to. And so a way to protect us and protect our current customer base.
Thank you. I guess my last question is about the N D A. And then Clarence, could you just generally speak about why we do N D As and the value of those at this stage in the planning?
Clarence, I'm C D C M C Director. N D A is a non-disclosure agreement. That's what most companies we work with ask for. A lot of companies are traded on the stock market. We can't disclose information. We get local business people, we get business folks from outside the area come and talk to us about investing in the city. And so when they come and share with us their business plan, obviously, we can't talk to that with everybody else, because that's their business plan and it has to be kept private and confidential. So I'd say 95% of the project we work on, we have to sign an N D A, which means we don't talk about people's projects in public.
So like when Chick-fil-A comes, they still ask you for an N D A?
N D A, and then usually people will know who they are when they come to the public, whether they either pull a permit or they're asking for an incentive from the city, then that's when they disclose who they are. But during that time period, they're looking at property. If we don't, if we disclose who they are, the price of the property goes up. And so then they, they may not be able to buy the property. So N D As are very important to do business and that's how business is done across the world every day in private sector.
That's really it for my questions.
Yeah, I have a question for John and that goes back to the self-enforcement for noise.
Yeah.
Do you know any details on that and how they, whoever this company is, how they plan on doing that?
I mean, it's, it's, I guess, the end user's, I guess, philosophy to make sure that all surrounding regions are respecting the, the current code. So if there was any issues, we would take, they would take decimal meters out there and make sure that they're conforming to that code. And if things were to come up, there's ways to do screen walls, different types of bufferings and things of that nature, but they're going to be respectful in that manner.
Okay, do they have monitors that they're going to be placing on the outside perimeter of the, of the property?
On this one?
No?
No.
So they'll just wait till they, somebody hears a loud noise out in the neighborhood and they'll call up and complain?
Well, we're...
Then they go out and take a look at it?
Yeah, we're doing an extensive engineering study. You know, we're taking worst case scenarios in this, in this design, so that we're making sure that we conform to applicable codes, but they don't, I guess, for instance, have a, a sound meter at the property line.
Okay. Maybe that's something we can look at as far as...
I can definitely bring that up to the end user.
Yeah, I mean, in fairness to the neighborhood and in fairness to keeping noise levels within the city's limits, how else are they going to know on a day-to-day basis if they're, if they're doing that? Not unless somebody goes out and takes a walk right around the perimeter with a noise meter and decides, "Oh, we're over the limit. We need to do something about it." I mean, they could be going on for a month, two months and people wouldn't even know about it.
Yeah.
So... Okay, so is that something we could put on the list that we want the company to do?
I got to talk to the end user about that, obviously.
Okay, can you get back to me?
Yeah.
On their decision on that? Okay.
Are there any other comments from council?
I wouldn't have a problem with, with the city even looking at something that could measure the, the noise levels. We had this discussion with the police department when we were talking about loud parties down by the lake and the police department doesn't even use a meter. They basically use themselves to figure whether it's too loud. I've done research on some of these data centers too and noise has been an issue, but it's been an issue because those data centers never had an agreement like this end user is trying to cut with NIPSCO. They started using generators day one when they opened and kept using them. And generators are very, very loud. I would be upset with that too and I would not be in favor of this project at all if we're relying on generators to create the power. But I don't think that's going to be an issue with us, because we all use power and manufacturers in this town use power. And I don't hear any power, any noise problems from them based upon their NIPSCO use.
Tracy, are there any other comments from the council? And Mayor Angie, would you like to make any comments or statements at this time?
Sure.
So a couple of things with, with the site. Nothing has been presented to the council for a public vote until, I guess, your next agenda. And as stated, there was a couple of things that were stated that were misstated, but one of the things that occurred over the last, I guess, since May, since we had our first executive session, again, there were some back and forth and the council knows this, but after my comments, I said it's up to the developer to sell this to the public and to the council, not for me to do that. I think the location is zoned correctly, but my biggest hangup was around incentives and what the city gets out of it. And that was the, the thing, that that's why there was a workshop tonight, so that the public can have its input. It still has to go on the council agenda. And once it's on the agenda, you still have three readings to have, I mean, not three readings, you still have a public input session. So that's the way things happen. And as we stated with N D As, just about every single project that I know of in Michigan City has had an N D A. Typically, what doesn't happen, as I stated, there isn't some announcement downstate that happens before everything is worked out at the local level. And that's the only reason why anything was even said or this moved forward in that, in that manner. Typically, you work through those solutions before you, you see those things. So with that being said, you know, it's still up to public, the public to come out and, and make their voices heard. I don't have a problem with data centers. I had a problem with the incentive. So I, I think data centers are a way of the world. They are. So I just want to make sure, you know, and I've said that to several people. I did encourage them to reach out to the unions and to make sure that there's conversations that are being had, to make sure that we have union people on the job and that we have local residents on the job. And I stand by that. But I am going to look out for Michigan City and the future of Michigan City as a whole. Now, I know we didn't talk about it and I know we have Dan Bode at chair. We didn't talk about the finance, financial piece a lot. I know it's in the, in the document. You know, the Economic Development Impact Fee and the $500,000 a year, protected $500,000 a year goes directly to the city. That money is annual, but we also get property tax money that's in addition to that. So I do want to state that for the record, because we didn't spend any time on it. Again, everybody has their research. I think everybody should continue to research data centers, because this is a big deal for a small city. It's a big deal. It's getting a lot of press all over the United States, but I support the concept of this data center. I do. I just want to make sure that the city gets something out of it and that we're protected in every way that we can. So we have to listen to all sides. And I'm glad that everybody came out and spoke. I think at the next council meeting, if there's something on the agenda, that you come out and speak for it. But nothing has been voted on, nothing has been presented to the council specifically around this data center, but there will be, there will be. So that's why they're having this workshop today. And I think they've been forthright, even in the money that has been presented as well. So I thank everybody for coming and for the council hosting this.
I would ask, if Stiler, I would just ask if Stiler would go around and collect all of your in-depth cards. As, as I stated before, once we gather these, we will send these out to the investors to build our questions that has not been answered, to provide us with an answer. And this information, the presentation will go on to the city website along with the Q and As. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Phoenix Investors for coming out and speaking with the Michigan City public and to thank all of the public for coming out for your comments and your questions. So thank you and have a good evening. So thank you and have a good evening.